Good evening and welcome everybody to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 28. In compliance with state law, city councils, special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. Following this meeting to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Soltis?
Yeah.
Councilmember Porter?
Here.
Councilmember Hartzock?
Here.
Councilmember Hurd-Jahousen?
Present.
Councilmember Samomo?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Mayor Wagner?
Present.
Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista. Everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Next is approval of agenda. Reagan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes tonight, man.
Look for a motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Next up is a public communication, and if council could please join me down in front of the dais, please. Not that I need this, but for those at home, tonight we have a proclamation that we would like to present, and I would like to call Rod and Leslie up. Is there anybody else joining us tonight, Rod and Leslie? Two of you. Okay. Scoop over a little bit so we can get both in. Join us right up front here. So we have a proclamation tonight. This is an honor to read this, and it is one of our, it is the oldest church in Covington. Whereas the Covington Community Church of Covington has been a community institution for eighty-five years. And whereas the Covington Community Church first held services in a local coal mine in nineteen thirty-eight, and its establishment is part of the Covington history. And whereas the Covington Community Church supports local human service organizations that offer the citizens of Covington food assistance, homeless support, shelters, and recovery and support groups. And whereas the Covington Community Church has been a good neighbor, invested in the health, success, and vibrancy of the city of Covington. And now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby recognize the historical significance and impactful contributions of service of the Covington Community Church in the city of Covington, and invite citizens to join us in this special observance and recognition of its long history of involvement in the community. And Rod and Leslie, I would like to present this proclamation to both of you. And if you would like to say anything, Leslie, would you like, I'll let you speak first, because I know how Rod likes to take the mic.
You know, think about us to be able to do this. And our church is very special, and we are here in this community in a very unique location with the whole city growing the way that it is and us expanding, and we're just thankful to be here and to be able to serve this community. Welcome.
Let's say anything, Rod?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. It's a great honor to receive this award and to have been of service for eighty-five years in this proud and great community. And we continue to, we plan to continue to serve. Thank you so much. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Rod and Leslie. Thank you. Congratulations both, and thank you for doing everything that you do in the community. All right, thank you. Black, thank you. Next, we have a presentation about six PPD qunon chemical, and I believe we have Karen Dalton and Chris Cunningham with Cedar Grove and Ashley Bagley with Long Live the Kings. Are they online? All right, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Ashley Bagley. I'm going to pull my presentation, and then I will share my screen. All right, can you all see that?
Yes.
Perfect. Fabulous. All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Ashley Bagley, and I'm a project manager with Long Live the Kings. And this evening, I'm going to be talking about the Ohop Creek Stormwater Management Pilot Project. So as many of us know, storm water is detrimental to our aquatic ecosystems and threatens the survival of our local salmon populations. And researchers at the University of Washington Tacoma and Center for Urban Waters were able to identify the industrial chemical known as six PPD and its byproduct, six PPD qunon, as the main reason why storm water is so toxic to salmon and specifically detrimental to koho salmon, as pictured here, leading to pre-spawn mortality, or what is now known as urban runoff mortality syndrome. So to address this issue, Long Live the Kings and the Nisqually Indian Tribe and Cedar Grove have partnered with the Nisqually Land Trust, Herrera, and many others to pilot a new storm water biofiltration system off of State Route Seven, where it crosses over Ohop Creek and the Nisqually watershed. And Ohop Creek runs through the heart of the Ohop Valley and is the third-largest salmon-producing tributary of the Nisqually River. So our project is the first test of Cedar Grove's compost-based, containerized, mobile biofiltration system with an external phosphorus polishing layer that sits above ground and is designed to capture and filter stormwater runoff from bridges, elevated roadways, and other structures. And we added the external phosphorus polishing layer to address any concerns regarding phosphorus leaching from the compost-based media. So with this in mind, our project goal was to test the effectiveness of the biofiltration system at removing harmful roadway contaminants as well as test the effectiveness of the secondary phosphorus polishing layer at removing excess phosphorus. So the first step in achieving our project goal was to get the system installed at the project site. And after many phone calls with different permitting agencies and waiting on public comment periods to wrap up, we were finally able to install the system in January of twenty twenty-two. And this is an aerial view of the system during installation. Our next objective is to collect flow-based automated samples from the inlet, midpoint, and outlet, as shown on the image to the left. And this was completed in May of twenty twenty-two. And then our third objective that is currently ongoing is to share lessons learned and preliminary findings to inform transportation redesign projects in ecologically sensitive areas like the Ohop Valley. And the photo on the left is from a tour we gave back in July of twenty twenty-two, where members of the community and interested partners came out to the site, got a tour, got to see the system in place, in person, and hear the preliminary results from the water chemistry analyses. So moving into those preliminary results, storm water coming off of State Route Seven may have low nutrient concentrations to begin with, since the influent concentrations were some of the lowest. And as we suspected, the biofiltration container did increase nutrient concentrations since those midpoint concentrations were higher than the inlet. And the biofiltration container was effective at reducing zinc by seventy-five percent. It lowered the water's overall toxicity, and we had a reduction efficiency of ninety-two and a half percent for six PPDQ removal. I think it's important to note, though, that the six PPDQ testing was for only two of the three storm events we sampled. So it's a small sample size, but is extremely promising. And then switching and diving into the phosphorus polishing layer, we saw a slight reduction in phosphorus and orthophosphate, yet it was not as much as we expected based off of other studies that used the same layer. And during monitoring in twenty twenty-two, the polishing layer container didn't have a lid to seal it off during a large storm event. And so it's likely that those floodwaters came into contact with the polishing layer and reduced its reduction efficiency. But our project team believes that we can get a greater reduction efficiency by swapping out the polishing layer media and securing the lid. So looking forward, we're currently in the process of applying for funding to support additional monitoring and analyses. Long Live the Kings will remain involved in discussions around how to control six PPDQ as part of salmon recovery efforts and will continue to communicate with local, state, and tribal governments to implement green infrastructure solutions as feasible. So here are all of the fabulous partners and funders that helped make this project happen and that are helping keep this project afloat. So thank you to these organizations. And with that, I just want to thank you all for inviting us to participate in your council meeting this evening, and I think we're saving questions till the end, but I'm now gonna hand it off to Chris with Cedar Grove.
Thank you, Ashley. I'm Chris Cunningham with Cedar Grove Composting. I work in our Construction Services Division, most recently on filtering vehicle-impacted storm water using compost-based filtration media. Next slide. For those of you who don't know who we are, Cedar Grove is a family-owned company who started their first compost facility back in nineteen eighty-nine to help extend the life of the local landfill by diverting organic material and putting it to its highest and best use as compost. Next slide. Our Maple Valley facility is one of two that we have. The second's up in Everett. At the Maple Valley facility, we divert approximately two hundred thousand tons of material every year, and this creates over a hundred thousand cubic yards of finished compost. Next. Now to why we're here tonight. As Ashley talked about, six PPDQ is relatively newly discovered chemical, causing huge issues for aquatic systems. In Washington State, just a few numbers here, there's seven thousand miles of highways. That's only eight point five percent of the state's public roadways, and the state highways carry over fifty percent of the total traffic. Next slide, please. In total, there's about one point eight million vehicles registered annually in Washington State. That's conservatively seven point two million tires on the road every year, not including semis and trailers. The average vehicle's driven about twelve thousand miles a year, which is eighty-six point four billion miles of tires in contact with the roadway. Assuming a tire wears out at about fifty thousand miles, you have one point seven million tires replaced every year, which each lose about two pounds of rubber. So three point four million pounds of rubber in microscopic dust form is being lost into the environment every year. That's the equivalent of a hundred thousand tires being discarded into the ditches. The problem is, we can't just go pick up those tires and dispose of them properly because of what I mentioned with this being, you know, particles of rubber. Next slide, please. What we're learning is that bio retention systems, specifically compost-based bio retention soil, which is what we use at the Ohop Project, remove six PPDQ from the storm water. It also promotes plant growth and soil life beneficial to the environment and allows for really great landscape opportunities. Next slide, please. There are also compost-based filter socks that have been proven in the city of Bellevue to help address roadway runoff pollutants. Runoff that was killing fish prior and then postfiltration negated these lethal and developmental effects. The socks are typically used for construction erosion control, but with minor media adjustments can be used to filter this highway and roadway runoff. Next slide, please. We think with the positive information coming out on compost-based filtration, it's our obligation to minimize the negative effects we're causing with every mile we drive. Unfortunately, we have an opportunity to do this with locally created and sourced compost. The same material you ask people to keep out of the landfill in your city and other cities throughout the region can be reused right here in the city to solve this critically important six PPDQ issue. Next, please. In interest of time, I won't read all of these. These are from WSU studies, but there's a few quotes in here that are really important. Toxic runoff is killing adult koho in urban watersheds, and inexpensive mitigation measures can improve water quality and promote salmon survival. Next, please. Koho exposed to unfiltered highway runoff rapidly became symptomatic. All of the exposed fish were either symptomatic or dead within four hours. Urban runoff was a hundred percent lethal to otherwise healthy adult koho salmon. And constructed bio retention columns effectively treated highway runoff in terms of both toxic chemical exposure and salmon spawner survival. Next, please. Pretreating the highway runoff with soil bioinfiltration completely prevented the acutely lethal impacts on koho spawners. So those quotes are pulled from reports, or pulled from reports that WSU had done in the research that they've done over the years. It's very obvious that we have a huge problem here, and we're hoping that this compost-based filtration can be a big solution to that. Next slide, please. And the issue just isn't about the salmon, but all the wildlife that depend on them. And on that note, I need to add that humans, or I need to add humans to the slide, because recent studies have shown that we too have the potential to uptake six PPDQ. And the scary thing is, we don't yet know the impacts this could be having on human health. Next, please. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration on this issue. We appreciate being able to present to you tonight.
Hey, thank you, Chris, and thank you, Ashley. Do you have time, a few minutes for any questions?
Absolutely, yep.
Does council have any questions?
Beth?
Sorry, sorry. Thank you, Ashley, and Chris, I appreciate this, and I actually was on the tour that they showed pictures of and was able to go out and see that filtration system firsthand, and I asked that this be put on the council publication, just wanted to raise awareness about this emerging chemical and the highly toxic lethality of it to salmon. I mean, I was stunned to see that it doesn't take a lot in a storm event, and they were finding dead salmon turning up. And so it got the attention of researchers, but also the tribes that are very concerned about this. And now ecology's working with tire manufacturers to see if we can't reconstitute the chemical makeup of some of these tires to remove that chemical, but it's put in there to help it resist degradation from UV rays, that sort of thing. So it's not a simple switch, but I, so ecology's coming at it from one end. I see groups like Cedar Grove coming at it from another end with biofiltration. And I just wanted to bring this up so that the city's aware of some of these additional filtration devices that we might be able to put in some of our storm water runoff to address this chemical. I would hope the city can communicate with Cedar Grove and others just to see if there are pilot opportunities to use this technology. We're building bridges over our streams and removing culverts to help the salmon, and it'd be a shame if we do all that only to find out that the tires we're driving across are actually killing them quicker than the culvert. So I, yeah, I would encourage the city to continue to work with them. And then we're gonna talk about the repledge later today, which is, you know, about diverting stuff from the landfill, and this is compost material that didn't go to the landfill that is showing effectiveness at removing this kind of, so, you know, thank you for indulging me. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sean. Beth?
Yeah, Sean, thank you for that. That was probably the question that I had, is what are tools that might be made available? That we can implement? Or, you know, we'd have to look at it from a budget standpoint, of course, but I think it is a big deal, and like you said, it's four billion dollars that the state's paying to redo our culverts. Only to have the fish die of something else seems counterproductive. So any information that we can get on that would make it helpful for us to make a decision.
Thanks, Beth. Jennifer?
I have a couple of questions. Hi, the first is for Ashley. I was curious what the maintenance of some kind of similar system looks like from as far as taking care of that structure itself. I would assume the biofiltration filters need to be changed at some point, the polishing layer replaced. Just kind of some more information on what that looks like.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. And Cedar Grove designed the system, and Chris was actually the one out there doing the maintenance with his crew, so I'll actually hand that over to Chris if you want to talk about the maintenance of it, but at least in terms of prior to actually conducting monitoring, we would be switching out the media each time. But in terms of like the longevity, I believe we're still trying to figure that out in terms of saturation rates, and that's also really site-specific, but I'll hand it off to Chris, and he can talk about how you've prepped it over the years.
Yeah, thank you. So the maintenance on the Ohop system, we were doing or are doing monthly visits to that site, so even though our testing has been completed last year, we're still maintaining that site until we get further funding to continue testing. There is some debris that washes down into the filter system. The footprint of the filtration system that we have there is four foot by eight foot, so it's basically a mobile bio retention system. But we haven't seen the, we haven't seen the filtration media clog up at all. It depends, we do have a catch basin prior to the water getting into that filtration system. I think that's important to make sure that the solids and any garbage or debris that comes off the highway stops before it gets to the filtration system. For the polishing layer specifically, the idea is that polishing layer will be incorporated into the final system, so it won't be a secondary polishing layer. It'll be incorporated into the horizon of the filtration box itself. That's important because, like Ashley mentioned, when it flooded, we ended up getting floodwater into that system. We had to go kind of rake out the media just to refresh it, just to break up any, you know, solid or sediment on top, but we won't have that issue moving forward. So from the perspective of Ohop, there hasn't been a lot of maintenance that needed done. We did need to clean out the gutter systems along the highway. That was, we cleaned those out a few times.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question, you know, whether it be the system or one of these compost socks, once it's saturated, how is it disposed of?
Yeah, that's a great question, and unfortunately, I don't have the answer for that yet, and the reason is, we haven't done the testing on it. We haven't had enough rain events to really justify doing the testing on the media to determine how it needs disposed of. The idea behind these systems with both the sock and the containerized system is we would test the media after, you know, after six months or a year on the sock specifically for the filtration system, you know, we do need to test that, but then we would dispose of it appropriately based on the requirements from the county and ecology and so on and so forth. So we're working on that answer.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Just one question. Thank you. Will we get a copy of the presentation? Okay, thank you.
All right. Ashley and Chris, thank you very much for a great presentation and bringing this forward to us. And Karen, I see you in the background. Thank you also for being here tonight. So great to have that information brought up, brought forward. So thank you. Have a great evening.
You too, and thank you for the opportunity. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next up is our first of two public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your, raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. Looking at the sign-in sheet, I don't see anybody wishing to speak. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? All right, is there anybody online wishing to address council this evening? Seeing nobody raise their hand or approach the podium, I will close this public comment. We will have a second opportunity towards the end of the meeting. Next is approval of the consent agenda. Items C one through C four. Look for a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next is reports of commission. First up, Economic Development Council. Josh, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Welcome. Greetings, council. Been a couple months since I have the meeting with you guys, so I will summarize the activities that you did on the last year or whatnot. So as you might recall, coming out of kind of the organic grassroots, clean, safe, welcome concept that started about a year ago or so, Cedar's really honed in on the concept of combining that with potentially some sort of effort to really focus on the downtown core, commercial downtown core as we prepare for Lake Point coming online here in the future. So really thinking about how do we do, there's a lot of things we're trying to accomplish with that. How do we disrupt the natural herb, some kind of herb that we have investment growth, and then some split decline? And then really, how do you deal with the brand-new, really bright, shiny commercial center? And maybe some of the consequences of the natural with the downtown core that fits. So basically, we started that effort by inviting a group of business and commercial real estate owners to a forum to basically prevent the concept, to them gauge interest. As it turns out, both the people who attended that event, the group, conversation, there is a lot of interest in supporting something to the degree of what we would call a downtown association that would be defined by a geographic boundary that would, you would recognize as essentially the downtown core. So of course, the most, I think the top priority and most interest and the most thing people want to talk about is centered around something to do with finally missing safety, not a big surprise, as that's a big part of any city's struggle these days. So in response to that, we held another gathering of people from that community in Lincoln, they wanted to be very involved in this group. We met with the head of the International Downtown Association, who confirmed that this is something that we've kind of felt our way through the dark to that a lot of cities have been doing and really indicated that we're on the right side of this. There's a million ways to set up a downtown association. Oftentimes, it's grassroots effort that ultimately someday becomes a lot more formal, that could include some sort of self-pacts to be able to fund some of the bigger ideas and methods that downtown goes in typically as possible to. Currently, Cedar's is focusing on a low-hanging fruit-style launch program. We are looking for ideas. An example of that, when I was on the Thomas School Foundation Weekend, and we were looking to relaunch that group, we centered on a program called Winter Garden Readiness Camp as a way to go out to the community and explain, here's what, here's a project that the Thomas School Foundation would do. It's not the only thing we're doing. It's just an example. It allows people to kind of get their head wrapped around that kind of what a group like that could do, separate itself from the ETA, for example. And this program that we're looking to launch with would do something similar, where we would separate ourselves from certainly what the city might do, but also the chain of commerce, for example. So we are working kind of to come up with that idea. So we are working kind of to come up with that idea. And then in the process, we've kind of divided ourselves into some subcommittees to continue the kind of the background concept of clean save welcome. We have our clean subcommittee, we have a unification subcommittee, we have a communication subcommittee that's now working independently. And then we'll come back and discuss what we need to be doing. And at the same time, we have decided to try and not try, but we will reach out, back out to the artist panel if we want to reconnect with them for collaboration on several. There you go.
Thank you. Don't show any questions for Josh? Ben?
Can you gauge the appetite for, or is there historical? Evidence or suggestions that some of the major box stores would be interested in joining this? I mean, I'm assuming they're included, but I know sometimes it falls on the shoulders of mom and pop or more local.
Yeah, so yeah, so there's two ways in which the downtown association is probably going to resonate more with the property owners, the commercial property owners rather than. Of course, we want to get involved. Of course, they have a stake in this. Of course, they need to evolve. So our initial success has been particularly with some companies of larger industrial centers, two of them to be specific. And they represent probably, I don't know, thirty, forty percent of the overall square footage of what we call the downtown core. So there seems to be initially, we had a good mix of small businesses that came to our, to our forum, but then some pretty big hitters.
Anybody else? Josh, thank you very much. Please pass honor. Thanks. Great, great news that you brought forward. So thank you. All right. Thanks, Josh. Our youth council, we had a great joint session with them. I know Katie had to leave. I don't think anybody's still, yeah. No, Riley, you want to say anything additional from the joint session that we had? Nope. Thank you. It was a very good joint session. So thank you. Arts Commission, I believe that there was no meetings and so we don't have any updates. Wait until Mason's ready for, no, nope. Batteries only last so long. Thanks, Mason.
Yeah, my apologies to Fox. I thought we're spares parents of hope then.
Thank you. Next is Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. David, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission, this, just this past week. We had our meeting that, what we were all looking forward to. We had Daphne and Susanna from the city as well as Casey from Burke Consulting. Present the equity metrics draft to get our input. That was the bulk of our meeting to where they gave a presentation and Casey went through the, through the metrics and the various elements. And then we gave feedback, which was very extensive, I'm excited to say. So that they will be going back and doing a lot of updates and changes to things that they had not considered. That we were able to offer some insights into, particularly to the city of Covington. That weren't so generic as the approach that they were taking. So we're excited to see how that's going to kind of come together and then there will be another get together. We're going to be getting together also with the planning commission with that as well, with the metrics to continue to move through on that. After that, we went on to the talk more about the, the calendar and our celebration calendar. Thank you to those of you who visited the calendar that we debuted with Women's History Month. And thank you to the city for the posting the in social media and those of you that did visit and gave comment or did like our posting. We're really excited. This next month, we have decided that for the month of April, we will be highlighting Arab American Heritage Month. So we made a decision in looking at all of the various and variety of celebrations and holidays that take place every month. We decided that we would place the human element over the holiday. And so Arab American Heritage Month is new. It was just established last year in April of twenty twenty-two. So we're excited to have that coming up in April. And then again, we will also be in our calendar, those of you who did go to the site would have noticed. We then do have the calendar that while we are picking one element to highlight, we do have all of these other celebrations that we call out with links that people can go to and learn more. We are going to expand now that we're getting into Heritage Month celebrations. And we're going to be along with books to read like we did for Women's History Month. We're also going to be highlighting foods and recipes of those cultures so that people can learn more about cultures and explore a little bit more. Like I said, when I interviewed with the council sometime back. What brings communities together really is all about food and art and music. So we want to highlight those things that is so people can learn. And then the final was that we, because it was a very long meeting with the matrix, equity matrix. We then challenged the rest of the commission to come to next month's meeting with a list of the things that we would like to start proposing to the council. To bank to take action on. So we will be gathering up a list. Those, it could be things that we will either bring to the council during a meeting or a special meeting. Or that we might propose during our joint session, I believe is in July, if I remember right. But that's all to be determined on, on what we determine that we want to propose. So and then for next month, we will continue with the calendar for end of May. But then we're going to be meeting with Darren, who I believe is the community care specialist, right? Yeah, we're going to be meeting with Darren and seeing how we can give some support to his program and get some feedback from him as far as what we can help. Do from an equity and social justice viewpoint when it comes to that community outreach. That was about it.
Great. Thanks, David.
Just a comment on the calendar. It is very user friendly. I loved the books at the end and including the food is such a great idea. My kids come home from school and learn about these different holidays and while obviously Women's History Month, I'm clearly all into. There are definitely areas where I have an opportunity to learn. And so having those book selections and now the food, I, I feel like can really open up some conversations and dialogue at home as well. And anyway, like kudos.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? John?
Appreciate this. I was curious, and we don't have to go into a lot of detail right now, but working with the consultant on Covington specific equity. Metrics, what are some of the things you're looking at measuring here?
So some of the things we, we gave some input on to really go back and rethink are some simple ones around transportation. Transportation that goes along with some of the, there were some certain callouts such as the ability of citizens to get to a park within ten minute walk. Not a reality when you consider how Covington is number one shaped, number two, we don't have sidewalks. And so we, and then with transportation. Oh, there's also the ability like right now, I pointed out how the community park is so far away. And really the only way to get there pretty much is to drive. Well, when you talk about equity. Those that are on the lower income scale. Most rely on public transportation. Metro has one transportation. So there is the thought of maybe the city needs to look at having some sort of a commuter bus that people can schedule. That can help also the elderly, those who are not able to drive and get to the store. They are able to take a bus to go do their shopping or go to a doctor's appointment or go get a prescription. So those are the types of things that there was a lot more that we went into, but those were a few things when we were looking, challenged that is a lot of what they had down. Were very, very generic and we know that a lot of it they took from looking at cities like Redmond and Purion. Completely different cities than what we are with Covington. And so we really challenged them to really kind of take a look at. How the city never want to shape limitations we have in result as far as growth. And so there's going to be some things that really have to be very, very specific that they, that they're going to have to measure when it comes to the city of Covington.
Appreciate that, just as you were talking commuter buses, that's interesting because that access and transportation came up during youth council, came up with our meeting with Kent School District. So starting to hear a theme. You know, I, I can anticipate that things like insurance and liability are going to be things that come up. So I'm wondering if we can think outside the box and say, if it's not a bus that we buy and run. Are there other ways to get people transportation vouchers for taxis or Uber or something like that? So that, you know, it basically does the same thing, but the city's not running it. So just think about those as well. And then you mentioned books. I'm wondering if during, we got a great library here in our city, if we can't do some book readings or something related to some of the books that you're recommending or bringing. Good authors to come in about some of these additional issues. So just saying something else to think.
Good idea. Yeah, very good idea because we do, the links that we put on the calendar go to the county library. So that's actually be a very good idea to look into having readings. Thank you for that.
David?
Oh, no. Okay.
David, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Please pass honor. Thanks to the rest of the team. Human Services Commission, I don't believe we have a report tonight. Parks and Recreation Commission, Laura.
Good evening. We had six items on our agenda. So the first thing that we did was we took a look at names for Soco Park. Our recommendation you guys have in front of you tonight. I think you're taking action on it tonight. I have to say that the new naming policy was a really useful tool for us as the commission. It's really well crafted. It's very to the point succinct, easy to kind of follow without being restrictive. So kudos to the staff and you guys to the council for putting that together. We use that as our guideline to go through the many suggestions to narrow down the three that you were ultimately passed on to you. That took up a decent amount of time. We also took a look at the Parks and Rec Department Performance Report. And we also took a look at their action plan, just as something that we do as a, as a commission. Part of our charter is to take a look at that every year. We also, as the tree board, took a look at the twenty twenty-three tree work plan. That's one of the requirements for our Arbor Day certification. We passed that work plan with a unanimous vote. And then we also took a look at the commission's own work plan. This was something that we had created and used pre-COVID and then kind of tabled with COVID and are just now coming back to. Part of the challenge with a commission based work plan is that it changes every six years with the pros plan. So the work plan and the pros plan need to align and orient. So when the pros plan has a different structure, different goals, that means we have to do some shifting on our end with our work plan. So it's a lot of kind of formatting changes in some ways, and so we are working through those. The work plan is a really helpful tool for the commission to understand what it is that the commission is supposed to do. We're not council, we're not staff, we're not like making decisions on anybody's behalf. We're bringing recommendations forward to you as citizen representatives. And so sometimes getting your mind around how to stay in that lane can be a little bit of a challenge. And so that work plan is a great tool for that. Last item was the election of Parks and Rec officers. I will remain as chair, Rob Poole will be vice chair. Everything moves on as it has before. Oh, and then the other little note, the names that we presented to you, just so that you know, were presented in the order given as a unanimous motion from the Parks Commission. So there was no dissent on that, just FYI. Okay. Any questions?
Laura, thank you very much. And please pass on our thanks to the rest of the mission.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Planning Commission. David, welcome.
Good evening. Good to be back. David Cottle for the Planning Commission. We had the following agenda topics for the last meeting on March sixteenth. We've been busy every month. But what we covered there, the commission voted for David Cottle to be the Planning Commission Vice Chair. So I guess from the Arnold Schwarzenegger Terminator, I'll be back, this happened again. Major topic for the meeting, besides the election for the vice chair, was the climate action grant and the Covington Climate Vulnerability Index. It was presented by the city staff and Burke Consulting. The climate actions grant's purpose is to execute a climate vulnerability assessment to benefit the well-being and resiliency of the community. The climate action grant deliver will help Covington to understand the climate vulnerability within the city and propose a policy to address the city's unique vulnerability. The grant funding of eighty thousand dollars will be used to identify the following. One vulnerabilities associated with climate change across the community, including but not limited to heat waves, drought. Extreme precipitation, flooding. Two, communities and populations within Covington that may be especially vulnerable to climate impacts. And the third is a goal and policy updates for the comprehensive plan to mitigate risks. Climate, the Covington Climate Vulnerability Index, CDI, was presented, introduction of the draft of that. That would have been prepared by Burke Consulting in consultation with the Community Developments Long Range Planning Division was presented. The purpose of the draft vulnerability index, climate vulnerability index, was to assist community planning efforts in adopting, adapting and responding to community vulnerabilities due to a changing environment. To provide the information useful for Covington to develop the strategies to enhance our resilience over the medium and long term and infuse them into our city plans, budgets and stakeholder and partnership opportunities. And the last item to provide an opportunity to incorporate what the planning commission provides its feedback for that information. In Washington, the climate vulnerability index considers factors such as the region location and the vulnerability to extreme weather events, which I've mentioned before, is heat waves, droughts, floods, extreme cold, et cetera. As well as the impacts of changing precipitation patterns on the local water supply and local streams. Important to note that. Climate vulnerability index incorporates a formula and the formula includes exposure sensitivity and adaptive capacity. Takes the three of them and takes into account planning, the views of climate sensitivity and a perceived view of Covington's low capacity to adapt to climate change at the current time. Incorporate U.S. census data as well as other key data sources to address the city's unique vulnerabilities. The three planned deliverables that are going to be coming from Burke Consulting includes, one, a final GIS or geographic information services layers with exposure mapping, which includes the formula sub indices. An Excel workbook used to normalize indicators and perform calculations. And the last item is a story map with an overview and an interactive map to explore the data and to also provide transparency to the public. So they can go through spatial mapping with the data layers and actually go through and identify those areas or abilities and how the climate is impacting us. In summary, this climate vulnerability assessment will be an important tool for understanding the potential impacts of climate change on our community and for developing strategies to reduce vulnerability and to build resilience. I deem it to be one of the most critical, important areas for the planning, future strategies and procedures to accomplish the city vision, the mission objectives and our slogan. We'd look forward to successfully completing this project. The significant agenda items for the next meeting for the commission is to review the calendar assigned efforts for the public engagement plan. And intensive plan update with equity metrics would also be accomplished. For the public engagement plan and comprehensive plan update with equity metrics uh would also be accomplished. And that is what I have for my report, I'm glad to provide this status update for the planning commission. Any questions?
Thank you, David. Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much for a very thorough report. It's great to see you back up here. And please pass on our thanks to the entire commission. Thanks, David. That concludes our reports of commissions. Next up is new business. New business item number one, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into five participation forms. And an allocation agreement number two regarding. The national settlement with five opioid manufacturers and pharmacies. Turn this over to Mark.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I will keep this relatively brief because as you'll recall, I presented on this extensively in. Twice last year in twenty twenty-two, and this is a very similar settlement to what you had seen before. Whereas that dealt with major distributors in Washington, this is a national settlement with manufacturers and pharmacies. And so it uses the exact same allocation formula as was presented to you in April and September of last year. And it. Really goes into the process of settling with those five. Uh manufacturers and pharmacies, Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens and Walmart. And then it also covers the allocation settlement, which the allocation agreement goes into how those funds will be distributed. And what we're looking at right now is. Local governments in Washington will receive up to two hundred and seventeen million dollars out of the four hundred and thirty-four million that Washington has settled. Unfortunately, that will pit over fifteen years. Unfortunately, the Covington's chunk of the of the pie is is quite small. But this still is money the city can use to combat uh opioid. The the opioid epidemic and its effects. Uh, the funds can be used on an approved use relating to this that those they have opioid epidemic, or they can be pooled funds with other jurisdictions. In from a brief calculation, it looks like this will be. Somewhere around twenty-four thousand dollars paid out over fifteen years, so this is. I probably spent too much time speaking about this already, but it. Uh, I recommend the council move forward with this because if not enough jurisdictions. Sign on to this, the the amount of money will be significantly lowered or the settlement might not be approved at all in the litigation. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this.
So moved. Been moved and seconded. To authorize the city manager to execute the five participation forms and allocation agreement number two. In substantial form as presented and authorize the city manager to execute any other necessary documents. Related to this issue. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Hey, sixteen hundred dollars a year is a lot of money, so we can we can figure this out.
Thank you, Joe. Christina would like to speak to your second.
I think Mark said it all. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute the five participation forms. And allocation agreement number two in substantial form as presented and authorize the city manager to execute any other necessary. Documents related to this issue. All those in favor state aye. Aye, any opposed? The motion passes, thank you. Next is new business item number two, consider an ordinance amending chapter twelve. Dot one two five Covington Municipal Code, authorizing a transportation benefit district sales and use tax. Casey.
Last year, the Washington State Legislature amended the RCW to allow transportation benefit districts to implement. A one ten of one percent or zero point one percent sales tax. We can do this with council approval only, and the funds that are generated will be used for transportation improvements that preserve, maintain, construct. Or reconstruct the transportation infrastructure within our city. So the sales and use tax may remain in effect for a period of up to ten years upon a majority vote of the council. And we can do indefinite renewal, so we can renew this every ten years moving forward. During the council's annual summer summit, excuse me, on January twenty-eighth, it was council consensus to bring forward a proposed ordinance. Implementing and authorizing the TBD sales tax of zero point one percent. So if we were to implement this tonight, revenues from this would generate approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. However, there is a seventy-five day waiting period with the Washington State Department of Revenue. And that would mean that in the in twenty twenty-three, we would collect approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on an accrual basis. This tax would take effect uh July twenty-third or July first, excuse me, if implemented tonight. And taking into account the two-month lag that we have in sales tax collections, we would start to receive those funds uh September first. Um, so I was just gonna pull up um. A council summit slide and just give you a refresher of the types of things that Dawn had mentioned that we would be able to use those funds for. So just bear with me a second. Don, would you mind kind of going through?
Thanks, Casey and council. Uh, as we discussed at the uh council summit. The funds is as shown on the slide here, uh the idea is that. The predominant amount would be for our pavement uh uh preservation, and that's. A couple of bullets down on there, which would be the five hundred and forty-five thousand annually towards that pavement management. As we've discussed before. Uh, you know, we uh currently. The assessment of our current pavement, we're over a million dollars annually to that's needed. In order to maintain the uh the our existing pavement as it sits now, um so it's definitely um. Needed uh for that purpose. There's other aspects though too that are in need, and that's uh sidewalk panel replacements. Uh, so on that top bullet, we had initially talked about allocating about seventy-five thousand uh to that. And then also some um sidewalk grinding, which is if the lip of a sidewalk or something uh. Gets too great uh then to come in and and grind those. Those amounts um. Could be adjusted as far as there may be some times where we ha- need less than seventy-five thousand for for uh sidewalk. Uh replacements, for instance. So the idea would be that 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 could roll in towards the pavement management uh or something along those lines. The idea being that with a funding source like this in place. We could start planning and prioritizing the best use of funds for a multi-year, you know, basis, so we would start planning for. Uh, how best to utilize those funds uh and based on our existing condition for our pavement. And uh start putting a plan uh together to to maximize those funds and also continue to seek grant funds and utilize that in that way. To to maximize that, because with any grant funds, there's usually some uh matching as well, so these these would be the types of things that we could use for that as well. The last piece is though, with with as much detail and the need to manage the contract, put those things together. That wasn't allocating uh a need of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand for a contracts uh pavement manager. To be able to kind of put that together, put a plan together and then manage those contracts from from start to to end. Happy to answer any questions on that too, uh uh or I'll kick it back to Casey.
Just a little bit. Additional information, just um. The cities that are around us, what their sales tax rates currently are, just to put some perspective. Black Diamond and Maple Valley are currently eight point seven, just like we are currently eight point seven. The city of Kent is ten point one. And the city of Auburn is ten point two and has just recently enacted their own point one percent sales tax effective in January. Just a little bit additional information. And also, as as far as the taxable sales go, this would affect um a citizen. On a hundred dollar taxable purchase, uh ten cents.
Does council have any questions for Casey or Don, Jennifer?
Thank you, Casey. I was just about to confirm the math on there. Also to confirm it's not on groceries, correct? Groceries are a non-sales tax item, okay.
Anybody else? Okay, before us, we have a potential ordinance to pass. An ordinance amending chapter twelve dot one two five Covington Municipal Code, authorizing a one-tenth of one percent. Sales and use tax for transportation purposes within the city's transportation benefit district. This council wishes to take action tonight.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, we've talked about this at length for years. I thought the consensus was to be bold and move forward. So I am being bold and moving forward, knowing that ten cents on a hundred dollars will improve our roads and transportation. I'm listening to our residents. I fully support this motion.
Thank you, Jennifer. Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, um, I I agree with Jennifer, um, you know, obviously, every year I've been on council. I've heard about the deficit in our um. Transportation budget and maintenance budget, um, uh I'd be curious to see. What the overall, so he said some million dollars of just. Road pavement improvements, but what's the backlog that we have on just road projects and things like that that we keep carrying over every year? This is a a small step toward addressing that, um, and I know we'll continue to need to. Find additional revenue sources for our uh roads, but it's. Next to public safety, um, traffic and road mains are the two things that come up more often from the public, so. Um, like Jennifer said, I mean, we finally gotta step up and start addressing this, so um, so.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Joe?
So I just have a a couple of questions, because now we've gone out for. A TBD tax increase at point two percent. Last time was twenty eighteen, right? And what was the estimated? That that would have brought in, it had have been approved by the voters, do we remember? And I and.
Current days dollars, it would be one point five million.
What would the breakdown per per year per resident be? Well, I I asked Reagan this earlier, but I want to suppose what? About twenty, twenty-five dollars annually per resident?
In two thousand and eighteen, it was between eighteen and twenty.
Eighteen and twenty dollars, okay. And we said if it had passed, we would. Remove the car tab fee of twenty dollars, who would have saved the same. So now we're looking at point one percent, which is going to be what, somewhere around nine to. About nine to ten, nine to twelve dollars per resident per year?
Probably higher, just because prices are a lot higher now.
So I I'll just say fifteen. If that's amenable to the council, say fifteen a year. So we're going to charge still at twenty dollars for the count for the tabs and get another fifteen from this. I would think that showing, because we know that this point one percent isn't going to be enough to clear a backlog or to. Maintain our roads to the way it's at. And I know in a couple of years, we will probably have to go back out to the voters and ask for the additional point one percent to go to. Point two percent, which still at one point five a year, still not going to clear all of our backlogs, but it's going to put a dent in something. My thought process is if we're going to do something like that, let's start building that capital with our residents. And lower the car tabs to ten dollars a year, we're still getting instead of thirty-five. We'll say we're going to get twenty-five, but it builds that capital to show the residents that we mean what we say, that we will do something. Even if it means at this time, instead of what, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year from the car tabs roughly?
Three hundred and thirty thousand.
Three hundred and thirty thousand, that was giving us an extra twenty thousand, so would make would give us then instead of, we cut that in half, so that's.
One sixty-five.
Thank you. My son was working with my uncle, who was a math, who was a retired math teacher beforehand, so math, not my strongest. But. Uh, or wasn't my strongest in high school, so my thought is if we. Build that capital with the residents, that in two years, those two or three years when we go back out to them or to increase this. They'd be more willing saying the council's serious when they're talking about that. So I know I have to make an amendment, but I would. Um, ask that we amend this motion to say that. If if pass, you know, when this passes. You can rope on for me, because I mentioned this to him earlier. Forgive me for not being prepared.
You'd like to make an amendment?
Yep.
Stating that if this were to pass, you would like to also add that the car tab be reduced to ten dollars per vehicle.
Ten dollars per vehicle, yes.
It it's a little more than that because it would take a new ordinance and what's before you tonight.
So here here's what it says, I I moved to amend the motion by adding the following language after the last word. And further direct staff to return to council at a future date with an ordinance reducing the existing annual vehicle license fee. From twenty dollars to ten dollars per vehicle.
We have an a uh amendment, do we have a second for that amendment? Well, now's the time for a question.
I would, I would second that.
All right, are there any? Do you have anything further to say?
I I just think, I think it's going to build capital with the residents plus seven. We're already going to, if we were just doing only. The sales tax and not the, and we're removing all of the car tabs, we'd be getting four hundred and twenty thousand dollars more annually. Which is still not a lot when it comes to our roads, because we we've seen how much extra. Two seventy-second has costs in the last couple of months, but it does show. Initiative on our part, because we're looking to be bold and being bold means that in a couple of years, we're going to have to ask for more money and showing that we're willing to do something. First, is a way to show the residents that we are listening to them also.
Thank you. Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
Uh, I do believe that the math still works out that if we did um. Reduce it to ten dollars, we would still see an increase of four hundred or.
About almost six hundred.
Almost six hundred thousand dollars more in the kitty, help with those road projects now and and I do agree, I think. One of the things that we we always run the risk of people getting any kind of a um. A vote for a tax to go, no, 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 I mean, if they don't remember what we're doing tonight, it may or may not have any impact in. Several years if that happens, but I think it does. It does help build that capital, that collateral, my goodwill with with residents. Taking at least that step in the right direction, uh I know we talked about eliminating it all together at our summit. And we really didn't, I don't believe about reducing it, like it was either one or the other, and so this might be. Another gentler middle step. That again, might help build. Build rapport and and see that additional.
Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the amendment?
It would be against this, we've burned five years, five years. Are we listening to Dawn when he shows us how fast our roads are degrading? It's going to be so much worse a few years from now. We've talked about this and talked about this. The time is now, like, let's stop talking about it and sending staff back for more. When really, we're just afraid to make a decision, honestly.
Well, my question would be, how do we communicate this and and will the residents even know? That we made this, I'll call it a concession, um, to kind of soften the blow. Um, when we proposed in two thousand and eighteen that we would go for two percent and we would reduce the car tabs. It wasn't approved then, so I don't think they saw the value.
I think it's that they, sorry, Debbie's first.
So I hesitate to do that for for a couple of reasons. One, I I I think it's counterproductive to. Um, implementing the tax, we need the money, our roads are in poor condition, and so we were just. We're just giving up some of the income that we are currently getting. And then secondly, I don't know that our residents are really going to put the two together and uh understand that we did this. To help, whether or not we have to go back for another one percent. In one one year or five years, so I guess that's my my concern.
Thanks, Debbie. Sean?
Yeah, I I appreciate um all the conversation up here, uh and to Jennifer's point. Um, yes, we've been talking about this for a number of years and, like I said, it's one of the top three issues that come up is maintaining the roads. Um, to Joe's point, um, we did talk about, one of the things we would do is if the. Point two percent transportation benefit tax passed, we would eliminate the car tabs. Um, just for clarity, did I understand on your motion? That we would come back with an ordinance that would reduce the car tabs to ten dollars? If a future TBD passed?
No, if we pass this motion.
If we pass this one.
Yeah.
See, I would be, um, okay, yeah, all right, that's.
Christina, do you have any? Christina, do you have anything?
Sure. I'm also stuck between a rock and a hard spot. I completely agree. This is a sore spot. We hear from the residents left and right, um, that we need to fix this. Um, in, in stepping back and seeing, seeing this at a larger scale, the point one percent will put a small dent. And I also think it's important for us to plan. I'm not sure what the, to, to clarify. I'm not sure exactly what the solution is, but I am willing to entertain a conversation about this. But to step back and look at the long haul, and we know that the point one will not be enough. The point two is scratching the surface literally barely. I also agree. That was actually my, my response. How will the residents know? Will they know? Is there a campaign that we can, you know, launch that would educate? And are they listening? Will it be noticeable when they go back to pay their tabs? Oh, hey, this is half off. Or is it just, you know, ten dollars off and nobody notices? Um, and yet I also, I also don't think that most residents will notice the point one in the sales tax. And I, I don't say that sounding negligent, but people don't listen. Um, and it's hard to get their attention and they see the potholes though. So I, sitting back here, I know we are elected officials and we also have a due diligence to, to live up to promises, promises that I actually wasn't here for. But we're supposed to be the bigger person. We're supposed to be the, the elected. I would be willing to entertain a conversation about lowering the, you know, a hundred and sixty-five thousand. That's, it's better than what we would get from the earlier period for sure, but it, it doesn't make it or break it. But if there is a chance that we could gain rapport with our residents, I would be willing to entertain a conversation.
This, the city of Covington has a track record of voting no on, on taxes in general. And that's even when we, when we give them all of the information, which we did in twenty eighteen, we did in twenty thirteen. When was the other time we ran about? I don't remember. Twenty, twenty fifteen. Some, so we've given them these, this information. But now we can, if we lower the tabs, it's like, see, we, we've started this and I believe it will get us that. Because we're going to go out for point one again, because we're going to have to, to get our roads done. And it's going to be, well, what have you done for me lately? Um, this is, well, this is what we've done. I, I understand it might not be the popular thing to do right now. Hundred sixty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money, especially I know Don can use a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. I'm sure he's got it spent in his head right now. Um, but we're still looking at, if we do the point one and lower the tabs to ten dollars, we're still looking at a net gain of five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to go to roads, sidewalks, lights, crosswalks. Still a game.
Anybody else? Okay, council before us is a amendment to amend the motion by adding the following language after the last word and further direct staff to return to council at a future date with an ordinance reducing the existing annual vehicle license fee from twenty dollars to ten dollars. All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The majority is nay to the amendment fails. That brings us back to the original motion is to pass an ordinance amending chapter twelve dot one two five Covington municipal code authorizing a one-tenth of one percent sales and use tax for transportation purposes within the city's transportation benefit district. All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That motion passes. Thank you. Move on to new business item number three. Consider a resolution naming the park located at one seven zero eight one Southeast Wax Road as Founder's Park. Turn that over to Ethan.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. Um, so as you know, the last several years, the city had been planning for a park located at that address, which is right across the street from old Covington Elementary School site. Um, and there's the first phase of construction planned later this year. Um, this was another item that was brought up during the council's summit. And at that time, uh, it was the wish of the council to, uh, uh, solicit some suggestions from the public, uh, and then ask the Parks and Recreation Commission to review those rec, uh, those suggestions and then make a recommendation to city council. So, uh, tonight I, um, can share that there were a hundred and sixty-eight proposed names by the public. So that's a great response. Obviously, uh, they heard that we wanted to hear some suggestions and we got, we got quite a few. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Commission did review, uh, all those suggestions, uh, and I'm going to share their top three choices. Um, there is a resolution that is prepared for their top choice. Um, and then, um, uh, so the council can decide to go ahead and approve that resolution as it is, or if, uh, you want to choose one another, another name, you can so do so by amending that resolution. So the top choice was Founder's Park. Uh, there were a lot of people's names that were suggested by the public to be the new park name. Many citing the impact those individuals have had on the city's history and making. Founder's Park as a park name acknowledges and recognizes such individuals collectively. The commission discussed, discussed potential future improvements to the park, uh, that could include park features such as interpretive signage or engraved bricks, et cetera, that could further recognize past, current and future individuals that have played or will play an important role in the city's history. It was also mentioned that this theme would be complementary to a future public plaza and potential city buildings across the street. So the second, um, ranked choice was Soco Park, uh, or Soco Crossing. So Soco Park was a popular suggestion from the public. Um, it also happens to be what our planning name had been for the park. Uh, some of the notes from the public and commission include the following. Soco Park accurately, accurately refers to South Covington. It is simple. It rolls off the tongue. It plays off other similar names in other cities such as Soho or Soto. And it has a Covington is cool vibe and has a good ring to it. A similar suggestion of Soco Crossing was also proposed. The commission did like this idea, given the vision of the areas to have a street crossing that can be blocked off to connect the future public plaza to the park. However, it seems somewhat problematic to include crossing in the name at this point in time when the crossing feature would not be developed until sometime in the future. And then the third ranked choice was Whistlestop Park. This name recognizes Covington's history with being a train stop. And the park is not far from the present day train tracks. They're right across, um, on the other side of the creek. While a satisfactory name for the park, the commission ultimately thought there were other preferred ways to incorporate train history into the park. Uh, this again could be interpretive signage or a playground name or something to that effect. Um, so with that, those are the, the top choices and you have a resolution in front of you. Uh, if you were to go with the recommendation of Founder's Park.
I'm sorry, Ethan, go ahead.
Uh, it's back to you.
Okay. Counsel, have any questions for Ethan? Or this is a potential, uh, motion to approve the resolution in substantial form. Is that attached here to the name of the park located at one seven zero eight one Southeast Wax Road as Founder's Park? We have a motion to approve, or does council wish to take other action?
Incorporate to discuss or rank choice are individual?
That's fine.
I, I think that might be.
Because I'd asked for questions and nobody, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So, um, I, I think the names that the, the commission suggested were great. They were in my top, um, suggestions. Um, but I think if, if, I also thought the name Unity Park was really good. Um, just because it's in downtown and it's bringing people together. Um, so I, I would probably pick Soco and then Unity and then Founder's, if that was something we wanted to do or how.
I guess we'll move back to questions and comments. Anybody else?
Okay, got it.
Debbie?
Yep. Well, I commend the Parks and Rec, um, Department and the, the commission for the work that they did. It was, um, amazing to see that many people respond, but it was, I'm sure a very difficult thing to weed through. Um, I personally feel like we should respect what the commission and the, uh, Parks and Rec Department have come back and recommended because they, they read all of the comments. Um, well, we saw the comments as well. But, um, I think that they've made a good choice. And I think as long, I mean, I would have this caveat, but it stated in here that there will be future, um, nods or, uh, names in the, in the park in some way, fashion, um, to those people that have been significant in art history.
So I'm not going to lie, reading through these and re, reading all these, um, if I had to pick a top three, these were not my top three. But I do appreciate the work of the Parks Department and the Parks Commission to do this work. Um, I personally, because I do like the idea of calling it Prairie Park because we were Jenkins Prairie. We've already got a Jenkins Creek Park. I think we put Jenkins in front of another thing. It's going to confuse people as to what it is. So I think Prairie Park would be a better name for it to go off of the heritage of Covington. And it's, if we want to go off of its founding, because we would call it Jenkins Prairie. So I think calling it Prairie Park as a nod to our heritage would be the way to go.
Anybody else? Questions, comments, concerns? This council should take action tonight or want to bring this back? The Parks, like what Debbie said, the Parks Commission has, our policy is to send this to the Parks Commission to, uh, bring this back to us. And, um, I feel that Parks Commission has gone through it extensively and come back with names. Uh, so I appreciate what the Parks Commission's done and bringing this back to us. We're seeing nobody wants to take action.
Well, I'll move. So move. Um, okay.
That's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution in substantial form as that attached here to to name the park located at one seven zero eight one Southeast Wax Road as Founder's Park. Sean would like to speak to your motive.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate the conversation on, on this as well. Um, I wanted to highlight and reiterate what Debbie just mentioned about the opportunity to, um, place names of those people that had a significant role in the development, but, uh, of Covington. But I would also say that it's not just past that for future generations too, that as a new group of leaders come in, that they may want to recognize people on this park also. So I don't think there should be a, a date set on who gets to be called a founder of Covington. Because we're all continuing to develop this community. So in the future, they'll look back at what we're doing today and say, that helped get us to where we are now. So I think there's an opportunity for that. But I do like the Soco. It's interesting that that came up as a second most. And I do like the idea about the Soho, Soto, and I think we should capitalize on that and, and start to brand that part of our community is, is the Soco District or whatever we want to call it. That it does kind of roll off the tongue and, and would be easy for people to start saying, you know, come visit my business down in Soco or whatever. So, uh, I don't think we should lose that there is, it seems to be a lot of support for that idea as well.
Thank you, Sean. Debbie, do you want to speak to your second?
I think I already said what my points were on it. So, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Jennifer?
Um, I, I have to admit, when I was looking at the list over the weekend, I was disappointed. No offense. Founder's was not anything anyone even chose. Um, I like the spirit of it though. I, oh, actually I love the spirit of it and the, the theme and what we, the potential behind it. Soco, it's been called that for years. It's hello, Soto. If you've lived here long enough, I feel like we're just ripping off another city and hello, we're Covington. Why should we rip anybody off? Whistlestop ironically was the name that I submitted for Covington Community Park and was so bummed. I was like, that's a generic name. So I think Bathurst Day is another generic name. However, I fully support the process and the fact that our, um, commission presented this to us as their top choice. Therefore, I will wholeheartedly support it and wave the flag in, um, in celebration and fully support the theme that goes along with it. But I had to share, you know, I, I agree with some of my other council members. I was, I was like, huh, founders are so good. Like, no, no fireworks, literally, right? So anyway, I will support.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution in substantial form. Is that attached here to, to name the park located at one seven zero eight one Southeast Wax Road as Founder's Park? All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes. Thank you. Next up is new business item number four. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute the King County RE plus pledge. Reagan?
Yeah. So the RE plus is King County's approach to keeping valuable materials out of the landfill that are currently being discarded there. The mission is to reduce single-use items, reuse everything that can be reused and recycle what's left. Uh, this initiative, uh, looks to recover nearly seventy percent of the materials that are currently being, uh, thrown away into the landfill. Our, uh, RE plus is invest in local businesses and organizations that perform waste prevention and recycling projects. And I thought this, this is kind of interesting. Some of the examples they gave include, um, connecting chefs and volunteers who are cooking meals for communities in need with surplus food to support their work. Expanding furniture fixed events, repurposing post-consumer coffee bags and reusable products, and increasing the capacity to remove and sell salvaged lumber from construction sites. So that's kind of what the project is. The council heard a presentation from King County at your last, um, meeting and asked for it to be brought back to you for consideration tonight.
Counsel, have any questions? Boris is, yep.
So I'll move it.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute the King County RE plus pledge. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
I, I think that we had a great presentation and it's going to, it's, it's going to help, be helpful to the community. It's going to be helpful to the environment. It's going to be something that the county's been working on and hopefully, fingers crossed, that we can be partners with the county to make sure everything, all of it becomes a reality.
Thank you. Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
Uh, we understand the potential negative impacts and growing landfill. And we need to figure out a way to manage our resources better. So it's a great opportunity to bring this, uh, practice to light and support it moving forward for the health of our communities.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wish to speak for against the motion? Right. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute the King County RE plus pledge. All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. That concludes our new business for the evening. Uh, future agenda items, uh, we have a, uh, growing concern in the community about a potential project outside of City of Covington. So, uh, we've, at, three of us have asked that the battery energy storage system proposal that's going into King County, which City of Covington has no control over, uh, we were asked that it be brought back to a future agenda for future discussion. And with that, does council have any other items they'd like to see on a future agenda?
Is there council consensus to bring that back?
Is there council consensus?
Uh, yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you all very much. Next up is the council staff comments. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, today Darren, Julie and I met with, uh, the Recovery Navigator Program, uh, which is kind of a drug, uh, and addiction, uh, group. Um, they're funded by a state and county grants right now. They started last July. Um, we're going to see if this is another organization, uh, known to help us with some of the addicts. And that could be addicts of any sort, alcohol, drugs, prostitution, some of the other, they said to call for just about anything. They have about a half hour, uh, lead time to get to us. And they're seven days a week from about nine to seven. So we're looking forward to utilizing them as another resource and, uh, in helping us with people that are a bit, that are hopeful. And, uh, lastly, the sheriff, uh, completed the academy today. Congratulations to.
Great.
That's all.
Thanks, Chief. Don?
Uh, thanks, Mayor and Council. Just um wanted to, I think we shared with some uh information to council um last week and update, but um on our Jenkins Creek five sixteen project uh last Thursday night was a big uh night for us with uh setting the girders for that bridge. Uh, we had nine girders set uh on there and uh that was a lot of planning and a lot of uh work done uh to get to that point. And so we're excited about uh that and being able to uh start building the, the road on the north side and then ultimately um switch traffic over to that north side and then start the same thing again on the south side. So um excited about that. Um, you guys will see, some of you may see on the way home, there is some uh lane closures as they're doing um some pavement repair out there uh this evening. So uh be aware of that and that's all I have for the night.
Great. Thanks, Don. Ethan?
Yeah, I do have a bit of an update tonight. This is um on resident-based policies, which was another item that council took up at their summit a couple of months ago. Uh, this has to do with um parks and recreation programs and uh whether um folks receive uh priority registration or different fees for residents and non-residents depending on if they live within city residence or city limits. Uh, so uh regarding proof of residency, that is something that we'll be rolling out. Uh, this proof of residency process will be needed to be completed in advance of registrations. But once completed, the resident's account will be eligible for future priority registration uh in those wanting lower resident fees. Priority registration for residents will be implemented with registration of summer aquatics programs that have a history of high demand, uh such as swimming lessons, programs that we know that fill up. Uh, the plan is to expand priority registration to other programs with that same type of history of high demand, such as athletic programs later uh this year or around the turn of the year uh into twenty twenty four. And then resident and non-resident fees will be implemented with registration of summer aquatics programs. The fee differential will be approximately thirty-five percent. While the differential may seem high, it is substantially less than the percentage level that would result in a proportional share of the facility's annual subsidy. When applied to fees, thirty-five percent differential for non-residents resulted in pricing that still seemed reasonably within the market for programs and services. There are some exceptions to resident and non-resident fees for registered aquatic programs when warranted. An example being lifeguard classes that benefit staffing levels at the facility. Residents that have completed their resident, residency verification will not see any across the board changes to fees for summer aquatics programs. The plan is to eventually expand resident and non-resident fees to memberships and other registered programs such as athletic programs and facility reservations. Uh, it should be noted though that the fee differential for non-aquatic programs and rentals are planned to be less than thirty-five percent uh due to their subsidy uh being less. Um, another note is the fee for Seahorse Swim Team is also being adjusted at this time for both residents and non-residents. Uh, upon our review, this fee did not meet goals to cover direct costs and was below the market for similar programs. That result, um, that's resulting in the fee for the swim team will be increased from a hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars for residents and from a hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty dollars for non-residents. And so with all these changes, well, of course, we wanted to make sure that we communicate this out to folks as best as possible ahead of time. Uh, and so we're implementing a plan for that, including messaging through the recreation guide, social media, emails to current accounts, the city's website and signage at the aquatic center. Um, and we'll try to get ahead of it as much as possible. Um, but it'll certainly be a change for some folks. Um, so just wanted to let you know, you know, we're kind of aiming for that for summer aquatic programs and, and starting with that, we'll end it out with those programs. Um, but before we did that, we just wanted to make sure we gave you an update. Night. Any questions? I'm happy to take. Uh, otherwise that's all I have for tonight.
Um, I saw that the Seahorse Swim Team practice schedule is also changing. Instead of like a seven, eight, eight to nine, nine to ten, now it's eight to ten, half on dry, half wet. What's the rationale and reasoning for that?
Yeah, excuse me. So you may be more familiar with what the program was.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to, to email them directly. I just saw it and thought.
Yeah, I, I do know that it's going to be a two-hour program starting this year. And so they'll either be doing an hour of dry land activities and then an hour in water swimming or vice versa, starting in water and then doing an hour of dry land workout. And that's pretty common for swim teams. And so I think they were trying to match what um participants might see at the club level or if they're to continue on and swimming. Um, so I don't know how that's a change from previous years, but that's their plan this year.
Okay, I was curious if it was also related to the change of price, but it doesn't sound like it to independent changes.
No, I, I don't think you're, the, the fee was just um.
It was low.
It was low. I thought honestly, when he told me what the fee was, I thought it was for a week. And when he told me it was for all eight weeks, I was like, oh yeah, that's.
It's a bargain.
Yeah, it'll, it'll still be a bargain, but it's not as good.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ethan. Selena?
Hi, good evening, council. Um, I just have three things I want to bring up real quick. Um, the first one is a response to our meeting uh two weeks ago where Dorothy Simmons came and had some questions about code violations at the address on one fifty second. Um, just a heads up that I was able to put together a code compliance matrix with staff actions and some pictures for you. Um, that should probably be coming through Regan or Krista tomorrow. That was kind of hot off the press today at five thirty six. So just to give you a quick rundown on that though, um, the initial code violation was open in twenty twenty. There was about four areas that the city was authorized to evaluate for code enforcement. So that's tree removal, critical areas, and then interior and exterior improvement. Um, staff has been working with the property owner since that time. Um, these things do take time for compliance because there's reports that have to be done and work that needs to be evaluated. And of course, we were in the midst of COVID early on into that. Um, overall, staff went out this week and was able to garner that as of, I guess it was Tuesday or Wednesday of last week, that all the site improvements have been met and all necessary permits have been obtained. Um, the only outstanding item we have to date, and you'll see this in the matrix, is that we have asked to enter the building to ensure that the, any interior improvements that were proposed would um not have any fire life safety. So we'll just do kind of a quick stand and stand to make sure like any banisters that were put in or um any kind of um related fire uh smoke detectors and that kind of stuff are all compliant. Um, and the other, the other thing too that you'll see on this matrix is that there's actually two areas that were brought up, brought up that we are unable to do code enforcement on, and that is rental property and the number of families living in a home. So the city does not do, um, we don't oversee rental properties and um under the RCWs and further supported by recent um bills out of the house. Um, cities are not allowed to regulate the number of unrelated persons or occupy, uh, living in a household or occupying the. But that's all in the matrix. We've got some pictures for you that you'll, you'll be getting. The other thing I just wanted to just touch on is that tonight you heard from the uh Equity Commission that they're working through the equity metrics. I think they did a great job of giving you an update on that. I just wanted to let you know that that's probably going to be coming to the council in May. Um, just so that we can begin to work towards what those final metrics are because we need to build out our comprehensive plan um by December. And then also I would applaud the commission for giving a really good a detailed uh report tonight on the climate index. That too will be coming to you um probably in a briefing uh in May. And then uh you'll probably see the full report come June. So a lot of stuff that is coming forward that will be supporting our comprehensive plan update. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. Casey?
I was just going to let you know, we got our kickoff email from the State Office today. So wish me luck.
Didn't that just end yesterday?
It just ended, I remember. We're, we're kicking off again. It's year round.
Thanks, Casey. Mark?
There's no executive session tonight. I have no for the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Regan?
Mark got a round of applause.
Yeah, I feel like Jim Scott used to do that. So I'm like, I'm bringing that back.
I just wanted to let council know that uh House released their transportation budget recently. And it did include the priority funding that we've been asking for for Highway eighteen projects. So that's excellent. The Senate releases their budget tomorrow and there is a hearing on that budget on Thursday. So uh we'll be represented there and uh hopefully it aligns with the House's budget. And if so, uh, we can consider that a great success and we'll get that project done nine to ten years earlier than what we've got.
Thanks, Regan. Krista?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Krista. Christina?
Had a wonderful time with the youth today. Um, there, it just, sometimes I think I'm like, was youth like that when I, I wasn't that long, but they're just, they're brilliant and amazing and I'm continued consistently impressed by their work efforts and like the resources. Um, so I'm really glad we had that. I love the ideas that came from that and I hope that we can incorporate and take some of that to KSD and maybe change the timing on that in the future. But besides that, nothing for me. Thank you for a wonderful council meeting.
Thanks, Christina. Beth?
I've had the opportunity in the last week to engage with uh different members of the community at different age levels. We had an opportunity to go to Crestwood Elementary School and um engaged with the fourth graders. It was mayor. It was focused on, on the role of the mayor, but uh Joe and I were there as uh council members as well and were able to have conversations and the letters they wrote afterwards, oh my goodness. Uh, I, we were moved. I, I sat down and shared them with my husband. Some of them we laughed, some of them we cried and it was just very insightful to see what was important to, you know, nine and ten-year-olds um in our community and you know, I think we've got a lot of potential council or commission members in that group. So, um, and then again, also with the mayor's meetup. And I'm sure, you know, Jeff will talk about that, but um it's just, it's been great to get out with the community and, and engage with them and, and continue to check the pulse of what's important to people that are, and we hear, we see it on Facebook or social media, but it, it is nice to actually have a face-to-face conversation and shake people's hands and be able to talk to them and appreciate that they take time to come and, and tell us what's going on. Um, and I think that's how we're going to help move, move Covington forward. When we, a night like that, I felt very privileged.
Thanks, Beth. Don?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I uh echo what Beth just said about the increasing opportunities to meet with the public. Um, I too attended the mayor's meetup, but also their Coho um uh HOA meeting. Um, one of the things that I think is coming out of that is that our public is quite interested in the um management of their city and what's happening. They may not always know how to engage, um, you know. So I wouldn't take silence as saying the public isn't interested in what we're doing. Because when we go out and actually engage with them, there's some very passionate people out there and um I guess one of the things that we heard is that they're communicating with us, but they don't often feel like they're um, there's an adequate response to that ask or that request. And so I know I've, I've spoken with Regan about Covington connects and, and working on making that a more closed loop so that they, we do have a response and that we're letting the public know. So um who's responsible and what the ultimate outcome will be. May not be what they actually or what they hoped for, but I think that will at least make them feel like they're heard. So I would encourage us to keep thinking about ways we can do that because we are getting a lot of good feedback from the public. Um, but often I don't know if that translates into a s- a satisfactory response from the public. So I'm going to think more about how we do that. Um, I appreciate that we're going to have the battery energy storage facility on an upcoming meeting. Um, I appreciate Sean being in the audience tonight. I would encourage the RFA to stay engaged with that. Um, and when it does make the council, um, I'd encourage the RFA to come and possibly provide their take on what this potentially represents for our community. So that's it.
Thanks, Sean. Debbie?
Thank you. Um, last night Beth and I had an opportunity to go speak with the um HOA at, at Maple Hills. Um, they had a lot of good questions and I really appreciate uh Regan and, and your leadership team giving us some good solid answers. Um, there were a lot of things that were just kind of squishy, like we, we really can't control parking um on the, the neighboring streets. Um, we really, you know, the, the speeding, um, there, this isn't a good answer to some of those things, but we did really encourage them and will continue to do this, um, to use the Covington connects to report violations when they see them because then, then we've got track record, um, and we've got citations happening. So um, I, I really felt that that was a, a good meeting. I, I went in there feeling like we might get eaten up alive, but it, it were a very good group of people. Um, and I want to thank um Chief Easterbrook for coming out and speaking last week to the Covington Rotary. It was a very engaging discussion. I think, you know, we hear, uh, Beth and I are both on Rotary. We, we hear a lot of what you had to say quite often, but it was new to many of our members. Um, the other thing I wanted to say about what our police department is doing is I, I really praised what you guys are doing in terms of the, the business um engagement with the um shoplift emphasis and the, the trespass. We talked about that last night because we were asked by the residents um or the HOA board, do you feel that your um downtown businesses are um thriving and safe? And we talked about what the city has done with ARPA funds and um that we really felt that we've got a, a very engaged and vibrant um chamber of commerce. And then we talked about what our police department is doing and I think they really appreciated hearing that information. So so we'll keep talking about what you're doing. People were very surprised that you have to have uh the property owner's permission to do trespass. So um, and then just lastly, on the state board this week, they talked about um statewide working with businesses that are a hundred or more employees to reduce their single driver commutes. I don't believe uh that there were any metrics or goals or that they're going to, you know, they have to reduce their driving trips by X percent. And I know it doesn't affect the city because we're under a hundred, but it, I thought of that as we were hearing about the burn off of the tires and what that's doing to our environment. So I mean, it ties into that. It's very significant. Um, I'll let you know if I hear anything more about it.
Thanks, Debbie. Jennifer?
Um, Chief Easterbrook, what was the name of the organization you mentioned? I didn't catch it.
I believe it's the Recovery Navigator Program.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, um, good job to council. Um, I know it's our job to be up here and to have conversations and disagree. And also, you know, obviously it's fun to go out and meet and greet with residents and go to these events, but it's also nights like tonight where we don't all agree. We don't all love what the commission's brought for us, but having respect for each other and for the process and all the work that our staff and commissions do for us. So um pat yourselves on the back. Like we don't, you know, leaders don't ever get the, the praise, right? So I just wanted to shit, say I'm proud of all of us. Good job. Thanks for showing up and doing the work.
Thanks, Jennifer. So.
Yeah, first I want to thank council for dealing with the ramblings of a madman uh today. I, I know I can get overly excited would be the term I use when it comes to certain topics that we discuss. But I want to thank you all for the discussion we had because I think it's important not only that we show how the sausage is made, but that we debate it as well. So other than that, uh Chief, I don't know which officer it is, but there's, in the last couple of weeks, there's been an officer out near Crestwood. Every morning when I take my son to school, I may be going eighteen miles an hour, but I still slow down even more when I'm going through that school zone. So I thank you for having him out there. I, this morning, as we pulled into the parking lot, I saw him pull someone over right in front of the school. So it was doing very good. As Sean said, uh Jennifer, Sean and I attended the Coho Creek homeowners' meeting this last week. Uh, Jeff and I were there the week before with their executive board. I feel like they had some very good questions and I know that uh Regan's gotten a message from me and Sean more than likely uh about, about those meetings. And I'm hopeful for a very good partnership with the Coho Creek HOA. Went with the mayor and Beth and Christina to Crestwood this week to talk with fourth graders. Uh, it was great. The last class, uh, the teacher there was actually my son's third grade teacher and she was super. And she was super surprised when she realized my youngest was at Crestwood now because when she had Ryan in her class, we were pregnant with Logan. So she's willing, she's waiting for him to be in her class in a couple of years. Uh, we have our first pick meeting in person in over three years next month. And I am excited to see all these people in person, but I am not excited to be cramped like a sardine in Renton City Hall because there's never any space when you sit in that, in that room with all of us in there. But I'm very excited to be in that meeting in person. Uh, when I get the agenda, I will send that one out, especially to Krista to share with everyone to get some feedback from council because in person I feel like it's gonna be an even more packed agenda for us to figure out what's going on. And then uh looking forward to the SCA dinner tomorrow night. I've seen few of us out there. That's all I have tonight.
Thanks, Bill. Um, like uh Joe and Beth, Christina attended the Crestwood reading for the fourth graders. And I just have to show all of these letters that were written by the kids. There's probably what forty or fifty letters here, um, which is very nice. I plan on um I read most of them, but I will um reply to everybody and when we get uh this one's, it, this handwriting looks just like mine. Yeah. Yeah. My doctor loves my handwriting. It makes it look good. Um, but they've already asked that we come back at a future date, so we will, uh, I'll make sure to get that scheduled and we'll uh, I'll get the replies. And I'll co- copy each of you on those replies. So thank you. Uh, it was a very exciting time. Mayor's meetup last um Tuesday. I want to thank everybody who showed up and asked questions. Not everybody can make it to a council meeting, but if we can take a meeting to our community, like it's been said, and have people ability to show up and um ask questions, uh, that's what we're here for, to be able to help everybody that we can. Uh, and again, thank you to everybody for that. I did send out responses to some of the questions that we uh got. I know I didn't get them all written down. So I apologize if you didn't get your response, but uh please feel free to reach out to me. Uh, last Thursday, I had the pleasure of going to the Juana's Club Middle School essay contest. Were the winners of the middle schools, the Kent School District. Everybody, every scholar that was in the ELA classes that wanted to submit an essay. So I believe there was over a hundred essays for seventh and eighth graders that submitted. There was a judges group that narrowed it down and the top winners got to speak to uh read their essays. And there were, and it's about talking about a problem that they overcame, talking about the role that they have in life. And um changes that they'd like to be seen. And some of those um essays that read brought tears to people's eyes. So I got to thank each of these students and um mend them. And I read a little bit of took what they said and turned it into other um real life. And uh, it was pretty good. Some of the kids have some very a lot of challenges that they had to overcome to get to where they were, or where they are today. Um, and then uh we, as a council, uh, met with the Kent School District last week with, with a joint meeting. And that I thought was very good. It's, it's great that we can meet with our Kent School District, our joint meeting, and I would love to see um I know Krista may not want to hear this, was trying to schedule it, but I'd love to see it twice a year. Um, but uh there can be a challenge at times, but it was very informative. And thank you for Krista for continuing to push to get that scheduled. So thank you. Pardon?
The potluck worked out. I was a little nervous.
Yep. Worked out well. Uh, with that, that's all my comments and we'll go into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine, raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five 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 campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in city hall and or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the period is prohibited. Anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address? I see there's nobody online. They left. With that, we have no executive session tonight. This council meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-eight. Thank you all very much.